All right, we'd like to call the order of tonight's Charter Township of Oxford Planning Commission Regular Meeting, dated November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. We could all rise and pay respects to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, can we note the role?
Noted, there is a forum. Mr. Nold, Mr. Berger, and Mr. Spiz are all excused. And everyone, please make sure that your, the light on your mic is green and that you speak into it.
All right, let's go through the agenda. Noted the role. Approval for tonight's agenda?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda dated November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
So we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Any conflict of interest, anything to disclose this evening? Seeing none. Approval of the minutes, Planning Commission Regular Meeting, October tenth, twenty twenty-four?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from the Planning Commission Regular Meeting, October tenth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll accept that.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Seven. Public comment on items not scheduled for public hearing or on this agenda. Seeing none, we will move on to commissioners' comments. Anybody have anything they would like to share, bring up, discuss? Seeing none. Ten. Unfinished business, master plan update.
No, no, public hearing.
Oh, public hearing, which we don't have anything on the agenda for this evening.
Okay.
So we'll skip over that to unfinished business. Master plan update.
Good evening, Mateo Pasalaco and Carronaw Warman Associates. We are the planning consultants for the township. Good to see everybody again. We had a little bit of a break at the end of October, but back to it tonight with plenty to get through. So, again, in our continuing work towards finalizing a full draft of the master plan, what we have in front of you tonight are two items that we're going to go through. One is a master plan, is a draft master plan, which is really more or less to gauge your thoughts on the formatting. Not so much the text. But just the layout, you know, the images, the way it kind of flows. It's important that these plans be, be engaging. If they're just handed to you like a, you know, and you know, the stuff we all used to read in college, that was times new Roman, ten font, full margins, top to bottom, no pictures, no one's gonna read it. So you do have to kind of take a little bit of the elementary school mentality and let's make it colorful, let's make it flow. So we did want to get your interest or your, your thoughts on that initial format this evening. And then we did present an implementation matrix. So this is, we've been talking a lot about vision goals and objectives. And then at the very end of that, we were talking about strategies. So what you have tonight in this implementation matrix is essentially the strategies associated with the vision goals and the objectives that we've been working on. So this is, this is really the meat of it. Obviously, there are a lot to go through. So my plan for the implementation matrix is really just to go page by page. Kind of a going once, going twice, going three times, and then on to the next. Not looking to rush, we'll take all notes, all thoughts, all conversations, but again, there's a lot of information there this evening. It's not the last time we'll talk about it. But tonight is kind of our first run of any kind of major changes we want to make or take. And then, one other note, if, once we get to it, is that you may have noticed that in the implementation matrix, if something was accompanied by an asterisk at the end, that asterisk indicated that that was either a new or revised strategy. So it was either revised from twenty nineteen, or it's completely new to twenty twenty-four. If it has nothing in, at the end of it, then it's a carryover from nineteen, that's still applicable. And then we did go through and remove anything that had been accomplished from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four. So with that, let's start with the fun stuff. What did you guys think of kind of the initial format of the master plan?
Can I jump in?
Sure.
Okay, go for it.
Yeah, the pictures you mentioned, it kind of threw me off. Can you hear me okay? My mic, my mic, okay. You know, comparing the two thousand nineteen to the draft, I found myself flipping back and forth a lot, trying to compare the nineteen to the draft. And, you know, strategies are moved to the matrix, whereas before, they were basically where the pictures are now. And I was, I don't know, I'm wondering when the final is done, you know, what's this master plan gonna look like? Is this matrix gonna be in the back of it, of all the, all the pictures and all the nice stuff?
Right.
What does that look like? Do you have an idea?
Yeah, I mean, right now, I think that the implementation matrix, they typically are found towards the end of the master plan, just because it's kind of a culmination of everything that the plan talks about. But, again, I can kind of collect feedback and see what's possible as far as whether or not there's a preference potential to both these strategies, where it just goes vision, goals, objectives, strategies.
So the strategies are, seem to be kind of the meat of, when I had to make decisions in the past on a vote, as an example, there was language from two thousand nineteen that I could lean on and really use as an example. From April of this past year, we had a vote on a development, and they were asking for a modification to the standard. It was a what, it was a twenty-five foot buffer on what button. And that specific language, that strategy, really helped me with my vote on that. That language was so specific, it was like our forefathers knew that we were gonna have that come up someday, and they wanted to make sure we had language in it to help protect that. So, I think it's really important to have good, specific wording to help us make decisions that are, they're objective and...
But your point being, for the format, is that maybe these, that these are in the same area that the vision goals and objectives are in?
I'm just used to reading the nineteen right now. I'm so used to going through the nineteen and...
Right, that's what I mean. So nineteen goes, vision goals, objective strategies. We had kind of talked earlier, and maybe before you...
That's, that's why I'm kind of the new guy in the block, and I don't wanna change anything that's already, something that's already put in motion for a good reason. But I'm just acclimating to that layout, that's all.
Any thoughts from the commissioners on that? Again, I can, I can try to re, we can try to go back and understand. I think it was just we wanted implementation strategies to stand out really a lot on their own, which is why we kind of gave them its own chapter at the end. But is there any, any other thoughts or comments on the format layout?
I like the layout. I, I found it was easy to read. I mean, the nineteen was good, but I'll be honest, I found it somewhat boring. At least this, you know, new people to Oxford and even current residents, I think they would find it interesting to read this and then go into the implementation. Whereas, you know, kind of boring, you look through the first four or five pages, and then it would get set aside. I, I think this layout, this diagram would make people read it front to back.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
Well, I went through it using the index to understand each section. And it looked to me at this point, I realize this is not complete, but that item five, the background, is missing. Item six, you've got goals and objectives. You should have the word vision in there as well, I think. I have a number of minor corrections. And rather than take up everybody's time, there are things like words are wrong, or you're missing a period, or you're missing a word. I've worked it up, and I'd like to give it to you after.
Sure.
So that you can then use it to go through. And I thought you were off to a very good start. I like the pictures. I think that would help some people with the reading. The only question I had about pictures is there are a number that have balloons in them. And I realize we see a number of balloons in the air over Oxford. Most of those, I believe, are coming from Sky Adventure. And Sky Adventure is not, to my knowledge, is not inside of Oxford Township. They're just across the border in Addison. So I don't know whether that has any impact or not, but it's something to realize.
So just to be clear, that more or less, it doesn't originate in the community or like trademarking issues with using pictures of their stuff?
Yeah.
They have the second one? Okay, all right, just making sure.
So then, on page six, at the bottom of the first column, it looks like it says, "The Oxford Township Master Plan, Master Plan, Presented for adopting its own independent master plan." I didn't quite understand what that said, what that meant.
And would items like this be in the markup that you referred to?
Yes.
Perfect. Then, yeah, I mean, if you're, if you're comfortable just providing that after the meeting,
Okay.
I mean, if there's ones that you'd like to bring up specifically, go for it. I, I don't want to...
Let's see if we can quickly run through some of these, so the other guys can see them. On page seven, you've got one, you've got two bullets, and then it says to be, the vision goals.
Okay.
And I think there's, that to be probably shouldn't be there. There should be a dot and real, real line.
Yep.
Okay. Then on page eight, under community, open house, the first line there, you've got community house. It probably should have the word open house in, or open, between community and house. Page, page nine, Planning Commission workshops. You have the dates of January to June of this year. Shouldn't it be January to November? Isn't this a sort of a workshop?
It's probably January to TBD.
Yeah.
Yeah, I gotcha.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
Okay. Keep you over here. Go on, on page thirteen, talks about commercial land uses. And there, the photograph of the ladies playing cornhole. I don't know how that fits with commercial uses. There might be a more appropriate...
Recreational one?
Right. Well, I don't know why it would be recreational, when it's under commercial use, land...
Oh, I'm seeing the picture would be under recreational.
No. Oh, this picture would be...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but if you did that, then you'd have to move the one of Phil riding his bike.
Well, we might get there. Okay. On page fourteen, on the first line, where it's the goal, it says, "Industrial development in Oxford Township should be", and you got cited to minimize. I don't, I don't think that word fits. I know this is somewhat detailed. Then maybe I got tired at that point. And then I got to the implementation matrix, and I stopped, because I didn't quite understand how we thought you were gonna fill that out.
Are you referring to this, the next piece?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Was that the curbs of your edits, or did you still...
Yes, those were my edits, but I'll still be happy to give you my copy.
Okay, all right, great. Any other thoughts? Again, you know, the, sounds like the impression overall is positive, some tweaks to play with. Any improvements, any?
I looked over the design. Overall, I was really happy with the draft. I didn't, I didn't critique it as much as, like, running, running it with a fine-tooth comb as far as like looking for spelling errors or some of these. The layout is what I was kind of specifically looking at.
Sure.
And I was kind of happy with the layout itself. Now critiquing some of the pictures and stuff, like, I wasn't gonna get that detailed or very specific related to it, but I could see how you could if you really, really start to dive deep into it, but overall, I'm happy with it.
Great. Well, good. I'm, we're glad to hear it. Well, we've some, you know, got a few tweaks to make, and, but this will kind of be the the bones that we use to build the full draft, once it's ready to show. All right, great. Okay. So then on to the implementation matrix. So kind of as I alluded to earlier, as we discussed, this is kind of the, the end of the line for the vision goals and objectives, because these are now the strategies that really kind of highlights specifics of what the township or the planning commission, I mean, various entities may want to pursue over the next five years as it relates to all the different goals that we've talked about for the community, related to development, related to natural preservation, related to zoning. I mean, I don't want to say you name events here, but there's a lot of stuff here. So with that, I kind of want to start with the first question of, you know, we have these, we've, we've set up with this column system where we outline a strategy, we talk about a timeframe for implementation, it's kind of your priority list. Responsibility, is there a specific department, organization, either within the township or outside of the township, that, that could be charged with something like this or partnered with? And how, what is the funding source? We don't have to answer those three questions tonight, but from a formatting perspective, do the columns seem appropriate? Are there ones that should go? Are there ones we should add? Let's start with Mr. Turner.
This is where I stopped, because I wasn't quite sure how we were going to use this. I would rather have seen, if I go back to the index and look at look at the information in section five, and also the information in section seven. If we had what you were planning to put in for those two sections, then maybe the strategy implementation would go, get broken down and go with each of those.
Well, so this is...
Section five is the background. And I don't see that that was really here.
Well, do you mean like as far as like a discrepancy between the two? As what's in this and what's in the implementation?
No, no. The information for section five was not here in any, any format like this.
Like, like this?
No.
No.
No, like this, like the rest...
Okay. You're saying that the, the formatting discrepancy between the two?
Well, if I go through here, what you gave us, and I look for the background information, the regional context, existing land, uh, land use map and category, they don't appear in here.
Correct, right, so, because it's not a full draft yet.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
And so, I thought if I saw that, plus section seven, which is the land use plan, then I could maybe take these and look at them and make some sense out of them.
I gotcha, I gotcha. All right, well, let's...
And the, and the timeframe of estimation looks fine. Who might be responsible, but where are you going to draw the funding from?
Well, like I said, we're, we're not answering those questions this evening. It's more of a formatting perspective, like, do you think that the funding column is appropriate, or do you think it's? Kind of get what I'm asking?
Yeah, I, I don't know that the funding is necessary.
Can I, can I ask a question? Like, let me ask you this. Why did you guys lay it out in this type of format, as compared to, like, what made you change to this, to this visual way of presenting it?
I mean, a lot of, unless there are, unless there are very specific projects, initiatives, or things of that nature, that just need that, that level of guidance, this can be more of a preference item. We have found that it does kind of help prioritize and give direction of kind of like, how are we going to kick this off? You know, how are we going to take this strategy and utilize it? And it says, well, we, this is like a year three thing, so we don't need to do it now. This department, or this group, or this body's kind of been identified as the potential lead on it, and we do have options for funding. So it's really, it's, I guess it's just to do a little bit of your homework before you actually get into the project itself. And it offers a little bit of guidance on, again, if you're going to these strategies, instead of having thirty strategies that are just there for you over the next five years, you have thirty strategies with a priority level assigned to them, and kind of the next step of the group that would take them on. It's not, this isn't a take it or leave it kind of format, it just helps provide structure and guidance when you go, you know, when you kind of start going through these items, picking which ones you pursue.
Would this appear in the appendix to the master plan?
This...
Or would it get broken down under the various sections?
This, this would be its own section. I mean, we changed, you know, the fonts, the formatting would all fall in line with what you've seen tonight. But it would be its own section, structured relatively the same way. It's not, it wouldn't be an appendix, it would be its own section. Or as, you know, we've potentially talked about...
So, so this would sort of fall under section eight of your appendix?
Yes, the way that this is, yeah, so you can see it's the implementation matrix under eight. And again, this table of contents might shift as we work on it, but the intent is that, yes, it's kind of its own subsection. Okay. Did I answer you? So with that, is there kind of a yes or a no towards the columns?
I guess the next thing is with responsibility and funding, are those, kind of asked my question, because are those necessary columns to have in there? Who puts that responsibility information in there for us? Do, are we supposed to say that, or somebody else help us to, to give that information?
It can kind of go both ways. I mean, it can be guided by you as far as your thoughts on who might. There's some that probably are relatively obvious as far as who might take the lead on them. But it, it's kind of a both ways. We can take a stab at it from the perspective of like what would make the most sense for us, and then have the, the planning commission tweak it from there. Again, this is not a take it or leave it. If, if the responsibility or the funding just seems too subjective or too, you know, how do we know? They can, you know, they can be removed.
I would say there would be information that would probably change over time, and that I would, I don't think it's, my personal opinion is a thing that it, is it absolutely necessary to have in there?
Responsibility and funding, or just?
Responsibility and funding. Because if, if we had a timeframe, wouldn't it be taken care of by the responsible parties without actually specifically naming those responsible parties? Right? Does that make sense with my, this statement that I made?
Yeah.
Where we don't need to call it out, it just, it would, it would get done by the responsible parties.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, I mean, I think like, there, there's certain things that are parks and rec all day. You know, like, there's just things that will make sense, and if there's things that aren't, or it's a collaboration, then, like I said, you can kind of fill it as you go. But it sounds like, is there an agreement that maybe responsibility and funding goes?
Maybe combine the two of them?
To, to be what?
Responsibilities and funding. This is a parks and rec funded by grants. That way, you'd, you'd free up a column to put maybe a priority tab to say, this is a high priority, or this is a down-the-road type thing.
That makes sense, and that, I think, I think we really just get into the branding of timeframe as far as priorities. They're called timeframes, they're called priority. I think they might be one of the same.
Okay.
Come on, Ben. I can see it. Your poker face is awful.
Along the same lines as what they're saying, I, I agree that, you know, if I'm looking at white space on a page, and, you know, the responsibility and funding, kind of columns are taking up a lot of white space, and you know, from a readability standpoint, if you're concerned about that at all, you could save a lot of space if these were either eliminated or combined, or, you know, they're cert, they become evident. Once they become a priority, it's like, okay, we need to define who's going to do that. If it's a year one or year two thing, that needs to be put in motion pretty quick, and define who's going to be doing it.
So maybe...
I do, I do, I just wanted to add, maybe I'm going a little bit further, but everything that I looked at, I kind of flagged, you know, sort of a one to two-year category, was things related to traffic, development density, and preserving natural features, the rural, the things that the community seemed to speak up about the most in the survey.
Sure.
So...
Let me throw, maybe this is our, this is what works. Maybe responsibility and funding get thrown in the text above to say that, you know, the priority list is kind of what is our guide to tackling these, you know, these tasks, at which time, you know, responsible organizations and/or funding sources will be identified. You know, we can kind of put it in the text, but leave it open enough to where you're not tied, you don't feel tied to what's in the box. And then the flip side is maybe the timeframe for completion is a priority, high, low, medium, as opposed to tying you to, you gotta do this year one, you gotta do this year three. Comfortability around that?
I like that. I like that idea a little, much better.
Okay.
Yeah, I like that better.
I would think that anything you have on there, it's years one or two, is gonna be a pretty small list, because they'd be done, or be worked on by now if they were, if we have ten things that are one or two years, right?
We'll only start the clock when it gets out.
I don't know. You know?
Okay. All right, so we'll move, we'll move responsibility and funding into the text, we'll change timeframe to priority, and we'll use that format. Okay, so next is going through the strategies. And so, we've got quite a lot here. Again, if it's an asterisk, it's something for, it's either from twenty nineteen that's been modified, or it's new. If it's, if it has nothing, then it's carryover. And then we, we did remove some from the nineteen that have already been accomplished in the community. So I'm gonna, kind of the questions to keep in mind as we go from page to page, because I'm not gonna read every single one word for word, is, what do we keep? What do we get rid of? Is there something that needs to be added? You know, just, just your thoughts on them. So I'm, I'm just gonna start with page one, and I think probably the best way is just go, I'll go left to right and right to left, just to give you a brain.
That's okay.
Okay. And we can start with that. So on page one, Mr. Babbitt, were there any of, any of these strategies that you have any thoughts, comments, concerns about?
No. So yes and no. So as of right, as of how they're presented and what we have here, I'm happy with it. So there's, there's no real major changes. It's just a matter of... No, I'm happy with, I'm happy with what we have on the first one.
Okay. Done?
Page by page or something?
Yeah, so one, if you get...
Okay.
All right, Corey?
I like it.
Mr. Turner?
I'll let go. I see where there may be a need for us to write some ordinances as we go forward here for landscaping, and then the second one related to trees.
Just from the perspective of just being on the radar of the work that we'll be doing... Just from the perspective of just being on the radar of the work that we'll be doing next year.
Right.
Great, okay. Alright. Page two. Mr. Turner, any thoughts on page two?
No, because I didn't go through.
It's not the last time you'll see them, so I mean, if you, if after this, you have some thoughts.
I haven't got any thoughts now, I didn't spend any time. I got two of these, and I stopped.
I tell you what, then, if something pipes up, then I'm gonna work with the commissioners here, I won't keep coming to you. Just raise your hand if something comes to mind, or you see something.
Okay.
Commissioner Bailey?
I will, I will go through them, and if I got some markups, I'll get that back to you.
I have no doubt. Commissioner Bailey?
I like the, the objective four about the M twenty-four quarter. Do we want to put anything in there about growing the east-west corridors to do some of the traffic, or is that getting too down in the weeds?
I believe we had some east-west language in there. Here, I will, let's see. East-west language. I believe it's, I believe it's there, if it's not, I will make a note to incorporate that somewhere. Commissioner Wolchak?
Yeah, I'm sorry, if I could just go back to page one first.
We're not even to.
I'm sorry, I want to do this to you again. But that preserve existing tree rows, you know, the zoning ordinance, I guess the zoning, or the ordinance committee is working on that from our last meeting, and, you know, that would be one that you could put a timeframe on of, I don't know.
I don't want to do that tonight.
Okay.
Just because like, I, once, once we got them, then I'll start filling in priority.
So related to page two, you know, one, I got hung up on the word absorb under that objective four. You know, the, ensure that the M twenty-four quarter can absorb the demand for high intensity uses. So I'm just picturing if we had to make an argument, or not, if a developer came in front of us, that was a very high intensity use of some sort. And with this language, do you feel as a consultant, be strong enough to support an argument to say, sorry developer, you need to do something more to this property so that it's absorbed within the, the landscaping is more robust, or the buffers aren't more robust, or something so that the rural feel is maintained, that's, that's the intent of this, right?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a few pieces of language in there that kind of relate to, you know, landscaping and streetscaping like long twenty-four for, for more impactful developments.
As I read through all of this, I was thinking, okay, if something's, a preliminary plan is brought in front of us, what language would we use to help build our argument to say yes or no to that? Typically it would be if someone's asking for something and we vote no, we need some language to help support that. So that, I kept on thinking through that each time I hit some of these bullet points, and some things we've already experienced, so. I'm fine with the way it's worded, because, you know, you talk about develop landscape and streetscape standards, it's just how and who, when.
Yeah.
When does that happen to help us, if a development comes in front of us?
Okay. Mr. Bailey?
I'm all set.
I want to make one more comment on number five. I know we've got required dense screening and buffering for commercial adjacent to residential, but what about residential to residential? To maybe protect some of the clear cutting entire.
I think, so, is, is your concern there more or less screening, or is it like, like the retention of natural landscapes and?
Retaining the natural, so that, you know, if you have a development going next to one development, it's not just a clear cut, but at least look to protect some of the the screening.
I don't, I don't think you can do that as, because as a landowner, you have the right to do whatever you want, essentially. And if you don't want any trees down here, or if you want to have an abundant amount of trees that look ridic, you know, but might be, you want shrubs everywhere, somebody else might see that as an eyesore, somebody else might see clear cutting as, I don't want that, but that person does. I don't think, I think that is a situation we probably couldn't put that in there.
Well, so that kind of works its way, you know, like woodland ordinances and tree ordinances, which is something that is kind of being fleshed out. But maybe to your point, it's, it's a reference to buffering between like dense residential and low intensity residential, like multifamily and single family or something along those lines. Okay.
I had another, I had two on page two, that's okay.
We're still on page two.
We're done.
Yeah.
We're still on page two.
So, objective six, the, um, limit expansions of public sewer water on a petition by petition basis. I'm not familiar with that petition process, but from a consultant standpoint, does that give us the leverage? It sounds, it sounds
It's so.
Self-explanatory, or, or common sense that each development, preliminary plan review would incorporate, okay, is this going to be approved to connect, or not?
Yeah, and so, the water and sewer committee is run through the building department, and so anyone who wants to look up to the system has to petition them, in which Jim Sharp does an analysis to see if the REUs are there. So that's more or less to start thinking about like, how do, how do we want to start using REUs from the perspective of, what kind of capacities do we want to build on for the utilities, and what kind of uses do we want tying into them? You know, as it, as it makes its way up the pier road, it's going to open up for, for more intense uses. But then there's conversations about, okay, should those intense uses be geared, designed more towards industrial, commercial, to accommodate that? Should it be designed more to accommodate residential, things of that nature, so it's, it's really trying to kind of plant the seed of thinking about your urban service boundaries and your, and your water and sewer, and how you want to develop that system, not, what's being built is being built, but beyond that, okay.
Outside of.
What kind of a capacity do we want to do next to maybe accommodate certain types of developments, but not necessarily others, or make sure that it doesn't track too far off the main line?
Because he's, Jim indicated at a previous meeting that the system has sewer capacity, and it could be added to, but there's areas that are currently out of that zone right now, but could connect if they put forth that the funding and the infrastructure.
Yeah, and Jim would better, better be able to answer kind of how design affects what you can do. So, but this, but this is part of that, to say like.
Okay, part of that petition process would be through the building department, which we did.
Right.
Sure, engineering.
Correct, like what RE, REUs are available.
Okay.
So. Okay.
I just have one or two, or two more things here at the bottom about updates zoning to increase weight of traffic impacts for new development and level of service for intersections. That's an, that's an add, it's got an asterisk next to it, it wasn't there before. It just, it gets back to traffic again, right, every time I, I read something that talks about traffic, or how are we gonna, what can we put in place to help us with that in the future? You don't have strong language to help us, because development keeps on happening, it's coming at us, so the roads really haven't changed a lot. And it does appear that we have strong plans for future road improvements to accommodate, you know, these hundreds and hundreds of residential units that seem to be getting
Yeah.
approved on a an ongoing basis.
Well, so, I think that what you can look at there, or the intent of what that is, is to say, you know, you could have something set up to where, you know, if it requires a traffic impact study, and it generates a certain threshold of trips, then the developer has to put forward so many, you know, so many improvements to help that traffic flow out into the roads. That's really, that's kind of really where it's going, is if they're going to generate a certain level of traffic, then improvements have to be included in the development, and potentially off-site to help accommodate that flow. You've got kind of an interesting situation, because you've got RCOC to deal with, and if they're close enough to MDOT, you've got MDOT to deal with, or at least the developer does. And they're gonna kind of go through their own system of assessing how that development's gonna impact that traffic. I will say that it's, it's not, it's the kind of thing where if it's zoned for residential, and someone brings you a residential project, and they can buy zoning, put three hundred units on it, you, your, your ability to say, to stop that from happening is, is very constrained, because it's permitted by right. This mechanism is more or less to say, okay, we know it's, we know it's going to come, but these things, these improvements have to happen for the safety, health, and welfare of the community. So that information, that language is there to say that, to, to start to develop, what, what kind of a mechanism could be put in place to trigger certain improvements if the site's gonna generate so much traffic?
Can we even do something, some language to have a traffic study for the community start within a year, so that as developments are coming, or preliminary plans are coming in front of us, we have this information that tells us whether we're, where we're at in the spectrum of good or bad for traffic, and we can make more informed decisions. We have, you know, the public's come in front of us and said, we have cut-throughs on Tanview for other things, you know, so I'm, I just feel like we're at a disadvantage when we're making a decision on a future development, how it could impact the, the general welfare of the community.
Yeah, I mean, right now, I'd have to go back and check the requirements, but typically right now, we work with the engineering, you know, with Jim Sharp, to take a look at a project, and then determine like, what level of a traffic impact study is gonna be required. And so then that, that gets put in as part of the site plan, it's done by a third party, and that third party typically makes recommendations and outlines, you know, the grade that those roads are operating at, you know, A, B, C, D, E, F. And then we kind of go from there to see, are they incorporating the improvements that the traffic impact study is asking them to? And we're in a position to say that you need to. So that process is there, it probably needs to be refined, which again, kind of leads back to why that language is there, is the emphasis for us to go to go do that.
Yeah, I don't have all the knowledge, I'm just asking if we could have some language baked in to help us be more proactive.
Well, that's, yeah, update, update the zoning.
Okay.
Cool. Okay.
So that, that is, so basically just the update the zoning, that is the, that's the verbiage?
No, it says.
No, no, but, okay, go ahead, I like.
No, no, I'm sorry.
You said, with update the zoning, and say your statement again, or what you were saying related to that.
What I was saying is, the way it reads is, update zoning to increase weight of traffic impacts for new developments and level of service for intersections.
Yes.
My point being is that, that is your, that is your substantiation, and to have us and the ORC and Jim Sharp Engineering work on your zoning language to put in kind of a, maybe a better system or a stricter threshold for, if you are going to generate this much traffic, these types of improvements have to take place. Okay. Onto page three. Commissioner Bailey?
No, I'm good right this minute.
Commissioner Wolchak? No. I'm sorry.
You're good, you're good, no worries. No, I don't have any major comments on here, I just, one of the comments that really pops out, you know, under the objective one is natural capacity of the land. That's one of the things in the previous master plan, I'm glad it's carried forward, because that's a very important term, it seems, as we're looking at developments and forcing, what sometimes feels like being forced, you know, very dense uses in the natural capacity of the land phrase is something that I lean on often.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner Bailey?
The only one that kind of jumped out to me is the explore the creation of several multifamily zoning districts. Several implies that we want to bring in a lot more density, more is that, or am I reading that wrong?
No, I mean, I get, I, I get where you're coming from. I think what it more or less refers to, some communities will have like, an RM one and an RM two. An RM one is really more or less for like a duplex, triplex, single-story kind of condo development, kind of like with enclaves. And then, an RM two would be something more akin to, is it, what's up on the hill, Applegate, Apple Ridge, by the high school? Do you know what the development I'm referring to? So an RM two would be something more like that. So this is just, you know, is there, is there an interest in developing multiple, multiple family dwelling designations that kind of account for which one goes where? The future land use designation kind of calls it out, it, it's still one category, but it kind of has two subcategories to it, but your zoning only has one multiple family right now.
Okay, just when I first read this, and I know community members will read this and say, oh, they're wanting to add more multifamily developments, and that's what our community keeps coming and saying, no, we want less of those.
Alright, let me see if wording is something we can look with on that.
Again, I could be reading it wrong.
No, no, you're fine. Okay. Commissioner Bailey, page four?
Um, nothing really jumped out at me, no.
Commissioner Wolchak?
No, nothing, thank you.
Yeah, sure. Commissioner Bailey?
Uh, just, just more of a comment for the objective number two, the update, update zoning and safety path ordinance to require pedestrian connections between properties. I was kind of, I was happy to see that, that changing, so it helps with the walkability and bikability of the, of our community install.
Yeah, no, that's a great, yeah, I like that one too, I've, I would like to see kind of a requirement for neighboring developments to connect.
Yes.
Great. Alright. Commissioner Bailey, any thoughts on page five?
I'm good.
Commissioner Wolchak?
Uh, let's see here, under objective five, promote the use of green building technologies and solar energy, and encourage building renovations and new building projects to achieve green building certifications such as LEED. How do we promote that, right? I've worked on LEED projects before, and are often very difficult to achieve, the, the cost benefit isn't always there, but using the strategies of LEED are very, they're, they're good, right? They're more sustainable, they, they lower energy costs, but to actually spend the time and effort to go through getting all the credits and everything, it'd be very a very time-consuming and difficult process through the whole construction phase, so, but I'm wondering, you know, what could we do to help promote that within the community? Is there strategies that, as a development is presented, what do we offer them to promote, right? That might be something, if we want more buffer zones and more or trees, you know, that are more desirable trees types, maybe we, we work that into our tree ordinance or something, and, you know, we find some land somewhere, we start growing trees, and I don't know, we give the developers some, some of our mature trees, we've been growing some of our property to help.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to think of ways to promote it, that's all, that's, that are economical, efficient.
I mean, sometimes you can, it can be an incentive within the development itself to say, you know, that if you utilize certain technologies, you can reduce your parking requirement by, you know, ten or twenty percent, and they might say, we don't, we don't need that parking anyways, that's a small parking lot, we gotta build. You know, it's more green space that opens up, sometimes it's a, it's a clearer pathway to permitting, because, you know, building height restrictions, if you put solar panels on top, technically they come towards that, and if it's gonna tip them over the edge of what's allowed, maybe working with some exception within the zoning to say it's permitted. So there's, there's like development bonuses that you can kind of throw them, you know, as far as how they lay their site out, or, or what requirements we might be able to relax, if they're, if they're using that type of system.
Okay. I see what you mean.
Okay.
Other than that, I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
Page five.
Commissioner Bailey?
No, I'm good, I know.
Okay. Commissioner Bailey, page six?
The only one that jumped out to me was objective three, obtain air quality improvements through restriction on burning and regulation. Is this industrial or residential? I mean, if somebody's got twenty acres up in horse country and they're burning a brush pile.
I'm sorry, where are you again?
Oh, I'm, you said.
Sorry.
Did I move ahead?
Yeah.
No, I'm good with page six, I think.
Commissioner Wolchak?
So I found it very difficult, obviously asterisks were things that were added, but things that were removed from the nineteen, I don't know, right, so I'm having to go back and forth, and it was very difficult to review this section, very time-consuming. The one strategy I'd really like to see from the two thousand nineteen carried over is, this is from page seventy in the master plan of two thousand nineteen, to continue to enforce natural feature buffers required by the zoning ordinance. I'm not sure why that would have been removed, but that, I leaned on that heavily when making a vote months ago. And, um, I think removing that wouldn't be a bad idea for. Our forefathers put this in there for a reason in two thousand nineteen and it really came in handy.
Yeah, and I.
I don't know if it's buried in a word somewhere and I just didn't see it, but, um, it was very specific in the nineteen and it seems to be kind of diluted a little bit in the, the graph.
Okay. All right, well, I, I have that note down.
So by making that note, will you be putting that in there then?
Yeah, I mean, we can, if, if we missed it somewhere, if it, if it conflicts or confuses with something else that's meant to do the same thing, I mean, we can either highlight that so you guys understand it better or we can put the language back in.
I would just add, um, if we have a review process you want us to go through like this again, just my own comments would be, if you can somehow help us with a, with a side by side comparison might be so that I'm not having to, it saves time in reviewing and it will give you, I think, a better, I'll be able to provide you with a better review of what you're asking for if I can go through it faster. But flipping back and forth between the two is, was very challenging.
Yeah, no, I, noted. Commissioner Bailey?
I'm good with this one.
All right. Page seven?
Uh, no comments on this one.
Commissioner Wolosak?
I have no comments. I kind of ran out of gas at that point.
Uh, it was a lot.
I hit, I hit a few more, but, um, they're all related to roads and, um, density, development density, the things I've already mentioned.
Okay.
And preserving natural features. I'm good on page seven.
Okay. Commissioner Bailey?
The only question I had was about the, the air quality, uh, burning. Was that residential or is that commercial or is that both? I mean, obviously if we have businesses burning, things like that, but again, if you've got somebody burning a brush pile out in twenty acres.
Right. So maybe that's more or less. It can either go or it could just kind of more or less reference, you know, larger rural sites.
Yeah, or, or just specify. I mean, obviously, you know, they still need burn permits, but.
All right.
All right, Commissioner Bailey, page eight?
I don't even have anything on that one.
All right. Commissioner Wolosak?
Nothing on page eight.
Commissioner Bailey?
Also on page eight.
All right, Commissioner Bailey, page nine?
Page nine, I was, uh, I was good. There was something on there I had written down. I have to find out where, where I wrote that down at, but as of right this, because we're going pretty quick. Let me, as of right now, no. Let me review my notes again.
Sure.
Because I think there was one thing on here.
Sure. And anything again, it's a lot of information, but anything after the fact in email, you know, however, whatever works. You know, I, like I said, this isn't the only chance we have to do this. Commissioner Wolosak? Page seven?
Just under, in the middle of the page, the under transportation goal one, uh, or objective one, the, uh, the third or second box down to coordinate with the road commission in MDOT to ensure road improvements and maintenance, enhance the efficiency of safety. Again, it's like, okay, great words, but let's go, right? We gotta get this going and how, when and how. And I'm not asking, I guess.
No, no, I know.
You for an answer on that. It's just how, how do we, how, how can you help us or what do we need to do to make this a priority? You know, a six month or one year or eighteen month type goal and we get something going on this traffic, the traffic side of things. I just feel like we're, we're, we're so far behind when these developments come sitting in front of us and they talk about bringing hundreds of homes to the area. And our traffic seems to be. You know, it's funny that it's for somebody who lives in the community, get their child to middle school.
Sure.
So.
Okay. Commissioner Bailey, I, I'll come back to you.
Yeah, that's fine.
No, I'm good on that.
All right, Commissioner Bailey?
Um, the question that I did have is, um, the one that says explore educational opportunities related to, um, new technol, new transportation technologies um, such as autonomous and, um, connecting vehicles. Can you, so that was originally from the twenty nineteen.
Okay.
Because, right?
Correct.
If that, like, is that truly one of the goals? Like, uh, I guess maybe why is that, can you explain why that's in there?
I think it's more or less just to pursue better understanding, like, the changes in mobility that are coming and how they might affect, you know, your current system and the improvements that you might wanna make. All, all of this doesn't, this doesn't necessarily have to be pursued, you know, by the township from the master planning perspective. It's, it's more or less, again, a substantiation if the township wanted to explore, again, kind of better understanding these things. Again, I'm not saying it comes and goes.
My, my, my takeaway on it was, is that really a goal of the community and is that a, or a part of the master plan? Maybe why that was suggested to put in there and if it just, it's more for curiosity of why that one was specifically implemented and added into it.
I mean, I think it, I think from the perspective that supposedly these types of technologies are supposed to help with traffic. So to the extent that we better understand how that might help and how it plays into this larger conversation, it's there. But again, you're looking for clarification. You're not saying take it out.
I'm not saying take it out, but more or less why was it put in there?
Okay.
And how, maybe more, more or less, how did it get in there and why? Is that really a, uh, is that really a goal of, uh, of the master plan? Is it really, really something or is it just something that's in there, um, to be put in there, I guess is what I'm saying. Are we really gonna be putting effort into making that a, an objective?
And that's why, yeah, yeah, yeah. And so that's why I'm giving feedback from you. So if you don't think so, you know what I mean? Then, then it can be kind of a consensus of maybe it should go. What would you thought? Take, leave?
I just found it to be, um, just a, a strange goal to have, not to say that it's, it's good or bad, or just, it's just odd to have a goal like that in there as a goal and objective. Knowing resources that we have and what we're doing, that's all.
Okay.
It's more of a comment that I'm.
No, no, a hundred percent. That, I just, like I said, for me, I just wanna make sure I'm, I'm following the lead on stay, go, but it looks like clarification kind of was the point.
Are we really gonna be pursuing it's what I'm, what I'm saying.
You tell me.
Because I'm one of many, uh.
No, I'm many.
Up here, one of many in the, you know, in the offices. So that's, that's the point that I'm trying to make.
Okay. Uh, okay. All right, page ten. Commissioner Bailey?
Give me a second, let me take a look at, uh, this one.
Okay, Commissioner Wolosak?
I broke a record here. Very bottom contract study to identify traffic network improvements.
Yeah.
Let's go.
Regardless of.
That's all I have.
Regardless of the objective, that should be in every single objective.
I'm sorry, I just, I just feel like I have to keep on like.
No, no, you're, it's fine.
Almost feels like it should be an agenda item every, every meeting we have.
I think that's a big one.
Should that be a requirement for every preliminary site plan that comes before this board? That a traffic study is done to see its impact or how the total, how it impacts the total area?
I guess it kind of, it falls on the.
I mean, if it, if it's a facility or something that's gonna have five or six cars, that's one thing. But if you're gonna put in a hundred homes, then I would think it would be apropos to require that.
And that's.
The preliminary site plan approval.
Yeah, and I think that's akin to what we were discussing earlier, is establishing some sort of parameter that, that, that just basically you've triggered now, you require traffic impact study.
Maybe some words need to be put in to our ordinance on the requirement for preliminary site plans.
That's, yeah, that's what we, yeah, essentially we've just been discussing beefing up that language to say if this, then a traffic study is required.
Right.
Commissioner Bailey?
The only one I, that kind of jumped out to me was objective five, work with Oakland County as well as other agencies to identify transportation. Um, develop a network with SMART to utilize transportation funding and NOTA services. I don't know, I just, when I first looked at that, is that something we really?
Let me tell you what I put, let me tell you why I put that one in there and it can come or it can go. Is you guys pay into the smart village and what do you get for it? I don't, you know, like that's, that was really my, I guess my prime for you guys to kind of think of. I'm not saying do you need it, but you do pay into it. So is there something in that, in, in what SMART offers, whether it be, I mean, I don't think we're talking about fifty-three foot buses rolling up and down M24, unless you want them to, but some sort of, some sort of, at least a toe in the water with the relationship of SMART and NOTA. Uh, are there transportation services that they offer that either you never even thought of or the community could utilize better or doesn't utilize? That came from your paying for it. Maybe there's something to get out of it.
Yeah, and I mean, when I looked at that, it was like, to me, that's just opening a can of worms to pay more and more and more into this. I mean, I always saw it like with NOTA being set up, that it was a you pay, you ride. But I just found out that, you know, we have a village and things like that to fund all this.
Right.
You know, is this something we, we need?
Well, I think, but, but I guess in the way that that village is structured, because it's regional, it's something the region votes on. It's not something the township could opt in or out of. You might, you might not win that village vote every sing, you know what I'm saying? So like, it's not just township residents that get to say yes or no to that. It's a regional thing. So if it, if it seems as though the trend's gonna be that, that the region is going to approve of smart villages, again, if you're paying into it, maybe you should get some for it. Again, it can come and go if it's, if it, if it sends a message that you're not looking to send. You know, it can, but that's why I put it in there was you're paying for it.
Yeah, that, that one I'm not in favor of.
Thoughts?
The bullet point above that.
No, no, go ahead.
Uh, no, the.
Continue regular meetings with RCOC? Uh, is that, do we have those?
Uh, Supervisor Curtis, he's, I don't know if it's like on his calendar or every single month, but he does have meetings with them.
Okay. Sorry, just to bring it back to traffic again.
No, no, it's fine. I'd love to be a fly on the wall for those meetings. Uh, 'cause supervisors were aware of traffic concerns within the community.
You missed the bottom point.
Oh, no, I.
Oh, no, he saw.
I did, I jumped right on that one, but I, when you were reading the one above, I, I, I.
But just, just so I know what I'm doing, SMART, SMART, uh, language come, stay and go?
I wasn't even aware that we were paying, that we paid for SMART, so it's kind of like new information to me. I was like, okay. So, uh, if I can see why you put it in there, um, I'm okay with having it installed.
Commissioner Wolosak?
I need more information on that. I, I don't know anything about how it's funded, where it's funded, the services.
Okay.
Not familiar with it at all.
I'm familiar with NOTA, so at least.
Why don't you do it for this round?
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. I mean, I'm not in favor of SMART or NOTA, but, you know, it, that's.
Yeah, just kind of making earmark to circle back with me on that one.
Okay.
Commissioner Turner?
Actually, NOTA is part of the SMART system.
Right.
For the region. And I think we need to leave something in here that we can use to push with them to say, as you're developing bus routes or other areas, what are you doing for northern Oakland County? Are you having a bus that comes up here in the morning and another one at night? Have you nothing, you know, but you're taxing this? This is not a new issue. This come up many years ago when Brooks Patterson was the county,
Exactly.
Director and he, uh, put up a very big fuss. And I don't remember whether it ended up for going to a vote and getting canceled or not, but it was stopped at that point. And they came back with it this time. When, before, I think we could opt out of it and, and we did, but this time there was no opting out. It either was approved for everybody or approved for nobody. And so I think somehow we, we ought to look at how we can take advantage of it in the future to get back what we're putting into it in our taxes. So I would leave it in there in some form.
Okay. All right.
Because NOTA has just expanded where they have services for. It used to be they were Oxford, Orient and Addison. They've now included Clarkston and Independence Township in their service area.
Yeah, and so I don't know if you guys have any, like, those are more like shuttle bus style services.
But I was always under the impression that to use that service, you paid for that service. I didn't realize that it was.
You might pay, you still might pay a couple bucks.
It's like bus, it, it's structured similar to bus fare. It's subsidized.
Yeah. But you can call them and say, I wanna ride to my doctor's appointment. And they'll send a vehicle that will pick you up, take you to your doctor's appointment. You tell them you'll be through in two hours and you wanna ride back home. They'll pick you up, take you back home and you'll be the only one on the bus. It won't be like a bus that runs from here to Detroit that takes thirty stops and picks, picks up and drops off fifty feet.
I'd be more in favor of Uber.
Well.
I don't have to pay tax to Uber.
Yeah, you would give him thirty dollars to go around the block.
Amazon.
Yeah.
Deliver from one place to the other.
All right. Well, it's a good point of conversation and then I'll, we can, we can tweak it a little bit if we move forward, but for now, I'll leave it in.
See, if these guys don't know how to use it, that means that there's probably a lot of other people that don't know how to use it.
Well, no, and it's.
And if nothing else, we require them to put out some TV publications or whatever. We're now servicing their, those areas.
Yeah, yeah. Like I said, my point of view was you're paying for it. So I was like, yeah, put it in there and see if there's something to be had for it. Okay. Uh, Commissioner Bailey, anything for page eleven?
No.
Commissioner Wolosak?
Nothing on page eleven.
Sure. Nothing on page eleven.
Commissioner Bailey, page twelve?
Uh, no, nothing on page twelve.
Commissioner Wolosak?
Nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Bailey?
No, I'm good with that one.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That, thank you. It's not easy. I know it's not perfect. Probably doesn't always come to you, maybe in a manner that you feel is as useful as it could be, but I do appreciate the amount of time and effort you guys put into this, so thank you. Um, again, after the fact thoughts, ideas, markups, you know, speak and email them to us. Um, and I would definitely say at this point, we'd probably wanna shift into that mode as opposed to waiting for the next meeting, um, because we're not. We're trying to, we're trying to get through this, you know, from the perspective of having you guys a full draft pretty soon. So again, if there's, unless you feel it was something that is important to be discussed at a, you know, at a commission level, um, a few tweaks here or there, you know, or, or thoughts or ideas or questions, we'll, we'll email as well.
Do you guys have a, do you have a timeline on which you want to have it done by? I mean, is it something, were you guys working on it?
It was yesterday. Um, yeah, no, I mean, we, I would say. I would say right now, we are probably somewhere around the seventy-five to eighty percent mark on a full draft to hand you guys. Um, with that, you know, it's gonna go through your guys' filter, you know, at least once or twice at that level, um, then it would need to go to, then we have a sixty-three day period in which the neighbors get to view it. Township board gets a run at it as well, so I would say realistically, we, we would love to have it adopted in quarter, the second quarter of twenty-five. Now, if there's an opportunity for that to be sooner, without rushing, you know, then we'll take it. All right?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to eleven, new business, which we have none. Twelve, communication committee reports, ordinance review meeting.
Excuse me. The township board last night approved two more of the ordinances that we have updated and you folks approved, the one on the electric vehicle addition, and the other one was some updated information in sections seventeen and eighteen. Those, uh, are done, so in the last four months, I think we've, uh, now put through four ordinances that have been updated and the board has approved them, and they are now part of our ordinance manual. Uh, next month, we're gonna really look and finish our proposed plan for next year of areas that we wanna look at, either ordinance updates or new ordinances or things like that. Uh, and they will include, as I mentioned last time, uh, landscaping, uh, woodland and more along those lines that will need to be added to our ordinance manual.
Thank you very much. I know last, uh, last meeting, Mr. Noel talked about the, the two gravel inspections that were completed, um, so I don't think there's anything new to report there. Thirteen, planner engineering reports, um, do you have Mr. Sharp's, uh, update in your packet? Any questions or things, uh, to go around that one?
No.
All right?
Uh, can I say something real quick?
Sure.
So just as kind of a heads up, we, uh, did receive the final site plan application for Barron's, the industrial site, today. We're still in the process of taking a look at it, but their hope is to be on the December twelfth planning commission meeting. I think with the way the holidays fall, that's our hope as well, um, so just as kind of a heads up for your December planning, uh, December twelfth, we're hoping we'll have Barron Industries' final site plan, uh, so just as a heads up.
Is that, we only have the one meeting in December, correct?
No.
Twenty-sixth is sitting out there.
The schedule is- The twelfth and the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
According to Susan's calendar.
Yeah, they, you could cut the enthusiasm of the night.
I was just gonna say, we're first week in November and we're to a four person quorum, um, I wouldn't hold my breath on that one.
I mean, I don't think we'll, I don't think it would necessarily be something where we would schedule a master plan if that's all there was for the twenty-sixth. But like I said, I, I can't, I haven't had a chance to dive into Barron's stuff yet, but the hope is that we can get them on for the twelfth.
Okay, perfect. All right, with that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion?
A second?
All in favor? We're adjourned.